Good evening and welcome to the April 28th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad that you're with us, hope that you're kind of watching and enjoy our different type of meeting as we did two weeks ago. Right now, I'm going to ask our staff attorney Elizabeth Taylor if you will give us our statement of necessity.
Is someone talking?
No, I think we lost Elizabeth.
Okay, lost Elizabeth, but we'll go on, we'll get that statement of necessity as soon as she returns. Right now, board members, I would like to have a, I'm sorry, we'll have to have a roll call, Ms. Van Cleve, will you give a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. And Elizabeth did just let me know that her internet just went out, so she's going to try to get back on. Okay, Wes Ballard.
Present.
Roseanne Barton.
Present.
Becky Goff.
Present.
David LaRache.
Present.
Amanda Moore.
Present.
David Settles.
Present.
Ms. Butch Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Now, we'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRache. Ms. Barton, you made the motion. Thank you all in favor, roll call vote, please, ma'am, Ms. Van Cleve.
Okay, Wes Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Taylor, Elizabeth, you're back on, will you give us our statement of necessity?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated section 8-44108B3, the City of Murfreesboro Board of Education hereby submits the following as its determination of necessity for its regular board meeting held via teleconference at 6:00 PM on April 28, 2020. Pursuant to the governor's series of executive orders declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and recommendation that public schools remain closed for the rest of the school year, it is necessary for the board to suspend and or waive various policies. The board must also vote on the budget for the upcoming school year. Because of the time-sensitive nature of these issues and the prohibition on large in-person gatherings, this regularly scheduled board meeting was convened electronically to allow the board to consider approval of the resolution regarding its policies in response to COVID-19, its budget, and other important business. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications, Ms. Troyo.
Mr. Chair, let me get a few audio issues going on here.
I need you.
Mr. Chair, we will be having quite a list of appreciations at our next meeting because of all of the community partners we have. However, tonight, we do want to recognize Wilson Bank. Wilson Bank had a monetary donation that was given to us that provided food for our families with the Ready for Kindergarten training sessions. These were sessions that were held for birth-to-age-five parents at Hobgood before the virus hit, and so we do appreciate very much Wilson Bank's monetary donation that allowed us to provide food for our families on that evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to now to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Goff, thank you. All in favor, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Wesley Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff. David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
And Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, action items, approval of a resolution for the suspension of policies. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, this is a result of the COVID-19, and it does require us to suspend policies. Most of these have already been voted on, or at least taken note of by the State Board of Education, but let me just review what those are that you actually will be voting on. First, you will be suspending policy 4.600, and we will not give grades for the fourth nine weeks, obviously, we've been out of school. Then also, policy 4.700, which is the testing program policy, this will result in our students not being required to take TCAP exams for the spring 2020. Policy 5.109 has to do with employee evaluations, with certified evaluations, and what this says, there are actually four parts, so I want to go over those. The level of effectiveness scores, we call that the LOE, will not be generated for educators in the 1920 school year. Pre-kindergarten and kindergarten teachers will not be evaluated using the growth portfolio model for the 2019-2020 school year. Any observations required by the State Board of Education, policy 5.201, that were not completed during the 1920 school year as a result of the COVID-19 are not required. And then finally, no adverse action will be taken against any teacher or administrator based on any part of the TCAP program. We also have suspension of policy 5.802, which has to do with the qualifications and duties of the Director of Schools. This says that I may request an extension from the State Board of Education to report any information that would impact education licensure, this means misconduct, discipline of employees, et cetera. Policy 6.200 has to do with attendance. This says that attendance will not be taken during the time of school closure due to COVID-19, and then transfers within the system, the zone waiver deadline has been extended to June 15. There are some other further resolves here that has to do with, I will consult with you all if I request any waivers from the State Department of Education, and so that is basically what this resolution says.
All right, do we have any questions pertaining to the resolution? Without any questions, do we have a motion to approve the revolution, resolution for suspension of policies?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. LaRache, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Wesley Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
It's seven ayes, it passes.
Motion passes. All right. Approval of open-close school zones, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, good evening, board. What we do every year is we present to you a list of schools that would be open zone, controlled choice, test-in schools, or closed-zone schools. That list there has been presented to you. One big change is that Salem is going to be a closed-zone school this coming year, and Kason Lane will be an open-zone school this year, whereas last year they were closed-zone, but because of the extra capacity we received at Kason when we rezoned, we have some additional room over there for Kason. Bradley Hobgood and Mitchell Nielsen remain controlled choice, and Discovery still is a test-in school. So really, the only change is Kason Lane's been moved to open zone, and Salem is now a closed-zone school. And we were asking you for a vote on those so that we can publicize these with our zone, zoning exemption.
Do we have a motion to approve the open-close school zones?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second?
Second.
Who was it?
It was Moore, Amanda Moore.
Ms. Moore, okay. All in favor, roll call vote, please, ma'am?
I think you're muted, Lisa.
Thank you, Wesley Ballard.
Wesley Ballard? You got an unmute?
Yep. Aye.
Thank you. Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Chair Campbell.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven ayes.
Thank you. All right, approval of audit firm extension? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, our audit firm is Matlock Clements, they are based here in Murfreesboro, and they've been doing the audits for us at $45,000 per year for the last, I think it's four years. They are, it's time for us to renew, and their only increase for the next three years is $3,000 more per year, and that's because we have added Salem Elementary School. And as you know, they do not only the individual schools books, but they also do our district-wide books, so we're asking for your approval of continuing with, Matlock Clements is our audit firm, for an additional $3,000 per year for the next three years.
Do we have a motion to approve the extension of the audit firm?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Settles?
Yes, do we ever shop this out, or how did we originally land with this group?
Yes, sir, we shopped it out, it was three or four years ago when we did, we had a different audit firm out of Nashville, and we did shop it out, and they came in with the lowest bid, and so that's the one we went with, and since they're only increasing by $3,000 for another school, we feel that's appropriate. Actually, professional services, we do not have to go out to a, for a formal bid like that because they're professionals, but we did anyhow just to make sure we were getting the best deal.
Yeah, I thought I did remember something about a change a few years ago, I just wasn't sure. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Or do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Goff, have a second?
I'll second since Becky motioned.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Roll call vote, please, ma'am?
Wesley Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the seven-member administrative collaborative team. Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir, thank you. Several months ago, the teachers voted to participate in collaborative conferencing with Murfreesboro City Schools. The next step is for the MEA to select seven members to participate on their team, and it's up to us, and it's up to you, to vote to approve the seven-member management administrative collaborative conferencing team. We've chosen five central office employees and two principals. I'll start with myself, Gary Anderson, Angela Fairchild, Greg Lyles, Sherry Arnett, Maria Johnson, Queenina Bell. I recommend that you make a motion to approve this team.
Do we have a motion to approve the administrative collaborative conferencing team?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. LaRache. Roll call vote, I'm sorry, any questions? Now, roll call vote, Ms. Van Cleve?
Yes, sir. Wesley Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Question? Report of local adoption of ELA textbooks, Ms. Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. After careful consideration, the Reading Textbook Committee has selected Expeditionary Learning, Open Up Resource for K-5, and Open Resource for 6th Grade as their recommendation for our ELA curriculum. I'm asking tonight that you approve their recommendation.
Questions, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Goff?
Would you say those names of those, again?
Yes, ma'am, for K-5, it is Expeditionary Learning, Open Up Resources, and for 6th Grade, it's Open Resource. 6th Grade's recommendation is they kept the same thing that they had this school year.
I also have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barton?
And you may not know exactly, but what are, what is a K-5 teacher going to be able to have in hand, and what will they have access to?
So, we're, we have in our budget, we have put the Teacher's Edition, Teacher's Manual for the teacher, we have workbooks, and then the Read Alouds, or the reading text that they had that go along with each module.
Okay, so when you say workbooks and Read Alouds, is that, Read Alouds may not be one per child, but are the workbooks one per child?
We do have that in the budget, yes, ma'am.
What about the 6th grade?
6th grade chose to go a different route, Ms. Barton, they chose to keep what they currently have, so we have made the modules, made copies, or have a master for them for that, and then we would provide that to everyone.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir?
Sherry, will those be available at the start of the school year?
Yes, sir, if it is passed in the budget, they sure will. Right here tonight is just that you are agreeing with the recommendation that the committee has made.
And can they be purchased before the budget is approved?
No, sir.
Okay, so, step one is that we approve it tonight as a recommendation, and then it's not complete until we approve it as a budget item.
Correct, you're just signing off on, you have received their recommendation as a textbook committee.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
Absolutely.
Ms. Barton?
Yes, I'm sorry, Sherry, I didn't, I don't mean to keep asking, but with the masters for the modules for 6th grade, I just want to be sure that that's something that most of them feel good about, because the number one, or one of the number one things I heard this last year was the number of copies that they had to make, and it sounds like K through 5 will be a lot better off with the workbooks, but if these are masters for modules, then they're still making copies, right?
They felt like, well, we're going to make the copies for them for the masters, but as far as the workbooks, they felt like that the text that they had and the conversations, they didn't use a lot of the workbook pages.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion then to approve the adoption?
I would like to do that.
You're good, thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second?
I'm seconding it.
Who was it?
It was a tie, it was me and Becky.
All right, we'll put it down as Becky seconded.
There you go.
All right, roll call vote, please, ma'am?
Okay, Wesley Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye, aye, aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
I'll take one Roseanne's ayes.
Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is approval of the 2021 General Purpose II Budget, School Nutrition Budget, and ESP Budget. Dr. Gilbert?
No, I've got it, thank you. Board, you received by email the changes that are in last year's, actually, this year's budget, and so basically, the budget that you have before you remains the same as in the last discussion. There is one minor change in that on page 35, under Transfer to Other Funds, we have the amount that has been changed from $413,105 to $409,200, but the budget remains the same. The fund balance is different because of the savings of this year. We still have $653,000 that we need to match this budget. We feel like that we will get that, or at least come close to that, within the next month, and so what we're asking you to do is to approve the budget as it stands, with the understanding that we would have to come back with you to get a balanced budget. So I'm open for any questions that you might have, or anything that was not answered at the last meeting.
Ms. Barton?
You know, I know that there's a possibility that we can get help from the government, but we're not sure what that's going to look like yet, and I mean state government. If that, if that amount were greater than what we needed to balance the budget, would anything else go back into the budget, or would we just leave it the way it is?
I think at this point, I would feel comfortable with leaving it the way it is. I think that our title funds are looking good this year, and so I feel good about being able to use some of those for professional development, but at this point, as tight as we would be with, with the fund balance, and knowing what can happen in a school district during the year, I would prefer to leave any remaining funds in that fund balance.
Okay. Other questions? All right, do we have a motion then to approve the budget as we have received it?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Settles, thank you very much, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Roll call vote, please, ma'am? Unmute.
I'll figure this out one of these days. Okay, Wes Ballard, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me ask a question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, so, so I'm clear about the steps we're taking. What we have before us is the budget as is presented now, but we know we still have some work to do to meet the balanced budget. That's when we'll do the final vote, is that correct?
You will have, we'll bring back to you, hopefully, very frankly, I hope it's within the next month or so, we'll bring back to a budget that will be balanced, we are hoping. So what we're asking, and Mr. Anderson, you can correct me, but we're asking you to approve the budget as it stands now, with the understanding that we will come back to you with a balanced budget.
Yes, we're, we're asking for approval of the expenditures because the revenue stream on the COVID money is not clear as yet. In fact, there will not be any information, real concrete information from the state until the second week of May. So we're, everybody, every district is up in the air right now waiting for that, for that guidance, because it's a substantial amount of money that would, if we can use it the way we would like, it would cover this deficit here that we're showing now.
Okay. As I'm...
I'm sorry, Wes.
That answers my questions, and so I would vote aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you. All right, reports and information?
Mr. Campbell, we need to approve the School Nutrition Budget, and also the Extended School Budget, before we get into the reports, if we could, please.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I saw that, yes, okay.
That's all right.
Let's take up the School Nutrition Budget.
Mr. Anderson?
The School Nutrition Budget is a self-sustaining budget, meaning it has to, it has to pay for itself along the way. At this point, Ms. Shealy has projected, and again, everything is going to be different because of the COVID, not COVID issue, but a $138,000 fund balance to be added to the fund balance in the School Nutrition Funds. It is self-sufficient and actually performs very well for us.
Questions on School Nutrition Budget? Would have a motion to approve the School Nutrition Budget?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRache, do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, roll call, please, ma'am?
Okay, Wes Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRache.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, so the School Nutrition Budget passes.
Thank you. All right, ESP Budget.
The Extended School Budget is located in your book, is in your information as well. They are projecting, Mr. Ringstaff and his team is projecting a $77,000 amount to go back into their fund balance. They too are going to have, you know, challenges with the COVID-19 issue, but they are self-sustaining, and they are doing very well as well.
Mr. Ringstaff, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, sir, I would like to make sure that all board members know the changes that we are proposing for this year's ESP Budget. No tuition hikes, for the most part, we are asking, before full-time employees receive we ESP care, we're asking for full-time employees to pay a token of a dollar a day, which is $200 a year, and that would pay for the snack. We're trying to get more buy-in from teachers and more ownership. At two or three schools, we are having a little bit of trouble getting teachers to help us work ESP, and so if you work ESP, your child does not get charged anything to attend ESP, plus, the teacher will earn $20 to $25 an hour working in ESP, so we're trying to get more teacher involvement, more teacher-children involvement, but we are asking for full-time employees, including teachers, to pay a dollar a day for ESP care.
Mr. Ringstaff, is there a maximum or a minimum time for teachers to work ESP to get this?
Very good question, Mr. Campbell, failed to mention that. A teacher would need to work an average of two hours a week.
Per week?
Yes, two hours.
All right. And then they also will receive pay for their working in ESP, is that correct?
Yes, if they're tutoring at our grant schools, they can earn $25 an hour, and if they do anything else, if they teach enrichment, they can earn $20 an hour.
Okay. All right, any questions on the ESP Budget? Mr. Ballard?
Let me get unmuted. Mr. Ringstaff, I noticed in the breakdown, there's like $39,000 in revenue from field trips. I just scratched my head a little bit, is that a, how does a field trip develop revenue?
Mr. Ballard, if you will look, that's $39,000 for revenue, and if you look down, I think you'll see $29,000 for expenditure, so actually, only, only $10,000. And sometimes, we can't accurately budget, I mean, figure out the exact cost for the field trip, sometimes we lose money, sometimes we make money, but as far as the field trips, we're budgeted. But as far as the field trips, we we're budgeted to make ten thousand dollars next year.
So is that an item you, in my mind, that should be a break even deal, but?
And it's close to breaking even. We we try to just break even. We don't try to make money. Uh, but we have to figure out the transportation cost and the mission price and things like that. So we're we're budgeting for to receive thirty-nine thousand dollars in revenue and spend in twenty-nine thousand.
Okay. Uh, my other question would be, in the case of the the current situation, shutdown situation, and then shut down through summer, what kind of a financial hit is that in dollars?
For the first month and a half, we were losing twenty-five thousand dollars a week because we were paying the staff, uh, ten hours for the first three weeks. Then we realized that the staff would make more money being unemployed with the unemployment plus the six hundred dollars a week stimulus if they qualified. So, uh, only about three people are getting paid in ESP right now. So we went from twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars loss per week to about six to seven thousand dollars a week loss. We anticipate losing sixty thousand dollars from now until July twentieth.
Okay, so that'll be out of this year's budget that you will miss out.
Yes, sir. This mostly this year, but about two or three weeks of next year's.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Barton?
Ralph, do they pay, do students pay for those field trips if they're able?
Yes, and but if they're not able, then of course they don't.
Yeah, I was going to say, and that's another thing that plays into how much money they make or don't make, because you never can, uh, predict exactly how many people are going to be in a financial situation to pay for their field trip and how many aren't.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right.
Any other questions? On the ESP budget? Have a motion to approve the ESP budget?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Barton moved, yes, and Dr. and Mr. Settles second. Roll call vote, please, on ESP budget.
Wes Ballard.
Aye.
Roseanne Barton.
Aye.
Becky Goff.
Aye.
David LaRoche.
Aye.
Amanda Moore.
Aye.
David Settles.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the ESP budget passes.
Thank you.
All right, reports and information?
Ms. Arnett?
I just wanted to take a minute just to give you an update on the professional development that we have been, that we have going on during the month of April um, for our teachers and our educational assistants and parents and families. We have been doing these PDs, um, by Zoom during the month of April. We have had presenters consist of the instruction department, instructional tech coaches, the special ed department, gifted school counselors, ACES counselors, the behavior specialists. We even have had Greg Tang, who's a a math guru, present, uh, two sessions, and he's also doing another session this Friday. We, I I can't express to you how proud I am of everybody and the work that they have been doing. We have generally had, on average, about eighty teachers and EAs for each session. This week, we actually have thirteen sessions going on throughout the week, um, which is our biggest week. And and the feedback has just been amazing. The sessions generally go from an hour in length to two hours in length. We've tried to limit Tuesdays because teachers are having PLC meetings during that day. So on Tuesday nights and and now Thursday nights, in the evenings, there's one going on right now, we are offering parent sessions, um, and that can be academics. We've Kathy Darty has done two on reading. And then, um, Joe has some coming up on Thursday evening for stress and social emotional learning. Um, so I just, I felt like you needed to know that, how proud we are and how teachers are just, there are some teachers that have not missed one session, they're on all levels. Um, I also wanted to share with you on Thursday mornings, we, the instruction department is doing math and reading challenges on Facebook Live. We have had, the first time we did it, we ran out of slots, so we had to do two slots for that. We had over six hundred children participate in the very first one. Um, Dr. Osborne kind of got that going. She sends certificates to all the students that score in the top ten. So that has been extremely, um, helpful. We continue to make packets, the hands-on packets that follow the chow bus each Thursday and Friday, and they go out by our volunteers on Monday mornings. So we're very proud of that as well. And then the last thing is, if you have not watched, um, City TV on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, the segments that our teachers are doing, they are absolutely phenomenal. They are on live at nine-thirty and then play again or shown again at four. Um, the focus this month for those has been science, and they are just, they're incredible. I think Lisa Trail could also say she's been the the person behind that and has done a wonderful job with that. But they are phenomenal. So I just wanted you to, just give you a quick update on our PD and what we are doing while teachers are working. Um, just to let you know, if a teacher had not received the total number of in-service points that they needed, if they watch one of these PDs live, then we do give them in-service points for that. So that was, that was my update on PD.
Thank you, ma'am. Sounds great. Ms. Barton?
Hey, Sherry, a question about, and I meant to ask this earlier when we were talking about the reading adoption. Um, what kind of, did we purchase professional development? Or is, did that come as part of the the, uh, package with the reading adoption?
So they they have right now virtual online training, and Kathy Darty, our reading coordinator, is actually going through those trainings before June first because they're free right now. Um, and she and I met this morning, and so we are, we're looking at our PD, we're definitely going to give PD. We're just not sure right now what that's going to look like. But if at all possible, Kathy wants to be the one to deliver it. So that's.
Rather than the people from the textbook?
Well, with them as well, just kind of in, um, kind of working together, collaborating on that.
I just want to be sure that we get to hear some of the things that the textbook company says. I mean, Kathy's great and she's extremely knowledgeable, but there are some things that that teachers want to hear the textbook company say.
Absolutely, and we were on Zoom with them this morning. So we're still working through the logistics of what that'll look like, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I have another question. All right, Mr. Ringstaff, you have anything to report on personnel?
Not really, we've had, um, we haven't changed in quite some time. Uh, I'll just let you know, if we have a teacher go out on leave right now, we do not hire an interim teacher for the remainder of school year. We divide tho- those that teacher students with the other members of the team, and they they take over and they, uh, take over those extra students and they're doing a great job.
Okay, thank you. All right, revenue report, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, sir, we're at the seventy-five percent portion of the year. We're up seven million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, on our revenue side, the good news is, on the money that came in for, uh, March, uh, came in a little stronger than we had actually projected, so that was good news. And we, and the, uh, collection on property taxes, uh, has come in very strong as well. That makes us feel a little better about the potential drop in, uh, in sales tax moving forward. Uh, but overall, you know, we'll we'll be fine this year. Of course, the issue is, how how long will we be out for, uh, the retail businesses? And we're watching that just about every day we can. Other than that, we're, we're pretty close to where we should be.
Okay. Any questions on revenue and expenditure? Very good. Uh, enrollment report, anything?
Well, the enrollment report, uh, ended the sixth period, which ended in February twenty-seventh. We didn't have a seventh period or an eighth period or a ninth period, and we won't. Uh, so our numbers at the end of the sixth, uh, attendance period was, we had ninety-six percent attendance. We were doing really good. Our average PTR was nineteen point eight seven, and we had grown three hundred and three students from the previous year. All those things register really well for our growth, uh, moving forward. The state has determined that the, they're going to keep the seventh period the same as the sixth period. So we'll see how that plays into the, uh, fund bound, I'm sorry, into the, uh, growth money for this year. We're hoping that it will, uh, stay stay strong because we did increase, uh, during that last period.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, Dr. Gilbert, would you give us a little bit of an update, please, ma'am, uh, pertaining to how we're doing in in regards to closing out the school year and what's going on in the buildings today?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. Um, Mr. Campbell, I'll try to remember that. I'm a little like Ms. Trail. I heard her this morning, and she wasn't sure what day it was, so I'm not sure what day it is either. Um, right now, we have teachers that are coming into the classrooms, and they are, um, alone in the classroom because our first priority is safety. And they are packing the materials that were the student materials, putting in them in bags. And then sometime over the next two weeks, and that's really left up to each principal, but we will be having parents who are coming in. It will be a drive-through, come in. Um, the parents will pop their trunks and we will put the student materials in the trunks. Or we, if they cannot pop their trunks, then we will set the materials on the sidewalk, back away, and the parent can pick up the materials there. We have bins located at each of our schools this week for library books, and we do encourage our parents to bring the library books so our librarians can start with inventory. But we would like to get those in, but those bins are there every day. Um, and then we will have our parents, we have our band directors that have called their parents and, uh, are letting them know to bring their band instruments in if they are school-owned next week and the next week. So really, uh, the times have gone out or are going out to parents, uh, today and yesterday. Should be out as far as what days and what times each grade level will come. Again, that's left up to the individual principals because they know their schools. The one stipulation that I've asked is that we have intentional numbers of of teachers or of staff there, that this is not a time to say goodbye. Unfortunately, this is a time where we are delivering materials because, again, we want to make sure that our families are safe. We want to make sure our students are safe, and we want to make sure that our staff are safe. So we have some teachers that are packing up their rooms now. We'll have some teachers that will pack up that last week. But all that will be completed by May the twenty-second. We are already looking at what next year might look like, and we don't have a clue yet what that's going to be. But what we have learned is that this district is very adaptable and absolutely can turn around fast. And so I can't commend enough the teachers and and the principals and the support staff and the district staff for what they have done the last few weeks and continue to do. Uh, it wasn't very many weeks ago that we made the decision that we would have parent-teacher conferences on the phone, and then the very next Monday, we shut down. And so to see what this family has done, this Murfreesboro City School family has done, has been remarkable. That could not happen without the support of the board, without the support of the council, the mayor, and also the support of our community. There's not a day that goes by that I don't have somebody writing to say, how can we help you? And I can't thank the community enough for their support, and I can't thank the system employees enough for what they have done. So that's where we are.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, any other business to come before us tonight? Any questions, comments, Ms. Barton?
Not really business, just curious. Um, you know, getting children registered for the next school year is difficult when we're in school until the end of May, to get everyone to respond and and so that we have some idea about teachers and and hiring and that kind of thing. Um, is there, are y'all going, I don't, I don't, and I have no suggestions, I'll be honest. But are, what kind of things have you thought of as try, as far as trying to get some kind of incentive or something to get?
The the teachers call last week, the students, the, uh, the attendance, uh, secretaries ran a report out of Skyward to see what current students are not registered. And they turned that over to, uh, teachers. Teachers ran, tried to contact those parents last week, the end of last week. The attendance secretary is in the process now of calling the current parents who are not registered to let them, to help them if they need help with registration, if they don't have a computer, if they don't know how to register. All of that's being done online. Uh, we have our pre-K registration that's going on. It is occurring both online and also with paper copy. The online, it is paper copy, but you can go online, print it out and br- and mail it in. And we also have bins at the schools. We're becoming a school system of bins, but they work well. We also have bins at the school for the pre-K registration. Kindergarten registration will be done online. Again, I can see us having bins. That will not start until, uh, May the seventh. And I can see us also having paper available there. So I think it's a process very similar to what we go through typically before the beginning of the year, where we're trying to contact parents and get them registered, except we're doing that right now. Um, obviously, Mr. Anderson has given us an estimate of the number of students that we will have and the number of teachers that we will need. Uh, we feel good about the number of teachers we hired. We feel like that they're very qualified teachers. We're very glad that they, we hired them early. But that's what the registration looks like. So it's really a combination, uh, phone call, paper, and also online registration.
All right, thank you, ma'am, very much. Any, anything else to come before us? Any questions? Ms. Fairchild, you've been awful quiet.
Mr. Chairman?
I like to fly under the radar.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Check.
I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make. One, uh, uh, I've been kind of multitasking. The mayor had an update, uh, his, uh, coronavirus updates that he's been doing. He had one at the same time as the school board meeting. And I just encourage folks to, uh, uh, log into the city's website and to listen to that as to, uh, some of the guidance for reopening, uh, some of the reopenings that are being planned. And I encourage folks to listen to that. And secondly, on behalf of the mayor and the council, I just want to thank the teachers, the staff, the school board, the parents and the kids that have, uh, you know, continued this, uh, learning process of our of our children and the school system and our community. Uh, it is just remarkable, uh, you know, the, in tough times, uh, I, someone told me the other day, a phrase I heard many years ago, tough times never last, but tough people do. We've got some really, uh, exceptional people that in this community, and these tough times, uh, have allowed them to come forward and great ideas, certainly persevere through this. And I just want to thank you for all the effort that that's being made in our school system, uh, to to really, uh, provide this valuable part of the quality of life that our community provides our citizens. And thank you from this mayor and city council. I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. I, words well spoken.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, Ms. Fairchild.
I would like to say one thing. Um, unfortunately, our camp borough is going to have to be canceled this year. Uh, I I just, uh, we hate it, but we're thinking of ways to maybe send some camp activities home with the kids so they can at least get some type of experience. But we, we felt like with school being canceled, we we couldn't have it, especially not knowing what's coming.
I understand, and we don't know when it's going to be over.
Right.
All right, anything else to come before this board tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move. No move.
Mr. Mr. Ballard moves to adjourn. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. LaRoche, seconds. All in favor, say aye and good night.
Aye.
Have a good rest of the week.